We have a meeting number 58 will now come to order. Please stand for the playing of the National Anthem.
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Together let us pray. O God, our Lord merciful, we stand together in your presence this evening to ask for a large measure of your wisdom at this Columbus City Council meeting. We stand in solidarity with all those who are suffering because of Ebola, because of ISIS, because of unjust discrimination or illness, poverty, or social isolation, as well as those whose lives have been disturbed by the terrible weather that began this morning that we have to endure. We also ask your assistance for ourselves and for the citizens of our community. There are also issues that council must decide this evening. Help us to understand the needs of our community. Assist us with your wisdom and counsel so that the members of council will serve our community and decide what will best serve the best interests of the community now and in the years to come. We also ask your blessing, Lord, upon Director Christie as he goes into retirement. May you give to him and his family the richest of blessings and good health and happiness now and in the days ahead. Be with us, Lord, in all we do, and help us to live lives of generous service to all, especially the poor, the weak, the voiceless, and the vulnerable. May all of us find our strength in you. Amen.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Are there any resolutions or announcements by members of council? Councilmember Harden?
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I would like to recognize the men of the Iota Phi Theta fraternity if they would come down to be recognized, please. I have a resolution that I'll read to recognize and celebrate the seventh year of Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated Alpha Eta Omega Alumni and Beta Mu undergraduate chapters pre-Thanksgiving event, whereas on September 19th, 1963, at Morgan State College, 12 students founded what is now the nation's fifth largest predominantly African-American social service fraternity, the Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated, and whereas the local chapters Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated responded to the need of the hungry families during the holiday seasons by providing a Thanksgiving meal. And whereas today, of Ohio's major cities, Columbus has the third highest family food hardship rate, and whereas this event serves over 1,000 meals and assists struggling families that would otherwise go without a Thanksgiving meal. Whereas this year, the Iota Phi Theta Fraternity, Inc., will assist with benefiting countless families in direct positive and meaningful ways and a commitment in making a meaningful contribution. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate the seventh year of this pre-Thanksgiving event. Just want to say thank you guys for the service that you're doing to the community. We greatly appreciate it. I'll give you guys a few minutes to say a few words.
Well, on behalf of Iota Phi Theta Fraternity Incorporated, Alpha Eta Omega, and Beta Mu chapters here in Columbus, Ohio, we do want to thank city council for recognizing this year organization for our work that we've done within the community. President Ginther, Ms. Mills, Paley, Tyson, Klein, Harding, and Councilman Craig's not here right now, but we do appreciate, um, I'm sorry. Appreciate.
Thank you.
We do appreciate. We do appreciate you guys recognizing us this year. Without other sponsors and other individuals that have come together with us and collaborating, we'd like to mention Zeta Phi Beta Gamma Gamma Xi, the alumni chapter, and successful Barbara Network here in Columbus, Ohio, also for collaborating with us this year and pulling this off. You want to? Really? Again, this year, I don't know who all brought their pocketbooks, wallets, checkbooks, and stuff of that nature today, but today we're collecting monies for the event also, being as the event will be this Sunday, November 23rd. We are looking to do possibly around 300 individuals feeding this year, but additionally, we're looking to donate possibly 25 to 30 baskets as well for families that would benefit from a free Thanksgiving Day meal. So again, we appreciate City Hall for recognizing us this year, and we appreciate the city of Columbus for all of our sponsors that have come out and helped us as well.
Thank you so much. And with that, Council President, I move for adoption of this resolution.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Councilmember Klein? Council President Pro Tem Mills?
Thank you, President Ginther. I don't have a resolution, but I do have a matter of high and important recognition. I want to celebrate the 17th Annual America Recycles Day. This is the only nationally recognized day and community-driven awareness event dedicated to promoting and celebrating recycling in the United States. Since its inception in 1997, communities across the country have participated in America Recycles Day to educate, promote environmental citizenship, and encourage action. In short, America Recycles Day is one day to educate, but one day to also motivate, one to make bigger and better recycling participation throughout our community in the better 365 days a year and not just today. As Chair of the Council's Environment Committee, I am very proud of the work with the citizens along with Mayor Coleman and his office, making Columbus a greener place for everyone and for generations to come. One of our city's biggest green achievements is the success of Recycle Columbus program. In its first two years of the program, giving 61,000 tons of garbage new life by being recycled, saved the city 3.4 million in landfill tipping fees, and created jobs within Rumkey's recycling facility right here in the city of Columbus. I'm also proud to say that Recycle Columbus has a 74% participation rate among our residents. This is well above the national average of 34%. One of the reasons for the city's high participation rate is because of Recycle Columbus volunteer and speaking ambassadors. This group of volunteer residents, I repeat, volunteer residents, have had hours of recycling and speaking training, and as a group, they have given more than 200 presentations. And I am so delighted to have two of our outstanding volunteers with us tonight, and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize and thank them for their hard work with Recycle Columbus and for helping to make Columbus a green city. I'd like to ask Wallace McLean and Mayo McKenday, I'm sure is able to please approach the podium. Full disclosure, Mr. McLean is one of my neighbors from St. Stevens located in the London area. And I also want to ask the recycle band to join me in recognizing yet another group of recycle ambassadors. They are musical students at For Hayes High School, and they have given garbage a new life by turning recyclables into musical instruments, and they are such an inspiration that throughout summer camps, the summer, a few camps were able to participate in creating instruments for the students to play out of recycled materials, which you're very proud of. And the band has played at over 40 different community events, and we're very proud of them also appearing on Daytime Columbus, and they have been very active over the past few years. And before we hear a brief segment from them, I'm going to ask our two outstanding volunteers to give a few words regarding their activities of recycling. Mr. McLean, I'll allow you to go first.
I'm Wallace McLean. It's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure doing Recycle Columbus, and also honored to be here, to be recognized at that. Thanks.
Yeah, it's my pleasure and my honor to do the work that we've been doing, volunteering to talk about recycling. It's a great deal of thing to do. The money that we save and what we do for the planet is so great, and for being a city that I love so much, one of the best cities in America, we should be up front in this kind of endeavors.
Thank you very much. And now I get to say "hit" to the band. (music playing) You did an outstanding job. One more round of applause for them, please.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Mills. Councilmember Paley?
Thank you, Council President Ginther. I would like to bring a resolution to the floor, and I am honored to bring Resolution 0201X 2014. And while I read this wonderful resolution, I would ask that Director Christie and his family approach the podium to recognize and celebrate the retirement of Chester C. Christie, Director of the Department of Human Resources, on November 30th, 2014, after 30 years of service in the public sector. Whereas Director Christie has proven himself a dedicated public servant, having served as General Counsel for the Ohio Civil Service Employees Association, Administrative Law Judge for the State of Ohio Employment Relations Board, and Deputy Director of the Ohio Department of Youth Services Human Resources Division. And whereas, having a career devoted to service, integrity, and excellence, Christie has stood out among his counterparts in both the public and private sector as a leader in innovation and foresight. Christie's creation of one of the country's leading public sector occupational safety and health programs, whose training in risk reduction initiatives have resulted in an annual decrease in work-related injuries for 12 years consecutively. Among many of great accomplishments, Christie has implemented an employee wellness and disease management program that promotes a healthy lifestyle for employees and their families and to reduce health risk factors. It provides education, fitness courses, demonstrations for healthy cooking, tobacco cessation, walking programs, health fairs, diagnostics screenings, and clinics for flu shots. To save money and resources, Christie mandated an electronic imaging filing and archiving system for claims, and also championed the establishment of a new centralized system for several personnel payroll and IT functions. Whereas by Christie's oversight and direction of employee training and development benefits, labor relations, occupational safety and health, and drug-free workplace programs, and oversight of the Equal Employment Opportunity Office, he has made the city of Columbus a standout employer. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus, that this council hereby recognizes and commend the retirement of Chester C. Christie, Director of the Department of Human Resources, on November 30th, 2014, after 30 years of service in the public sector. I first time move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Director Christie, the floor is yours.
President Ginther, Councilmember Paley, members of council, good evening. This is a lot tougher than I thought it would be. I am extraordinarily appreciative of the recognition and the resolution. Really appreciate the very kind and gracious comments. I want to thank the Honorable Michael B. Coleman, our mayor, for the tremendous opportunity that he afforded me, an opportunity of a lifetime. None of the successes that you've referenced were achieved on my own or in a vacuum, but so many of the extraordinarily dedicated human resources professionals throughout the city, both in the Department of Human Resources and then certainly throughout the various departments, their dedication, their sacrifice, their hard work, and ingenuity are the lifeblood of the successes that we've achieved. Equally important is the support that I have received unconditionally, and the assistance and support that I receive from my cabinet colleagues, from chiefs of staff, deputy chiefs of staff that we've served over the last several years, other members of the mayor's office, and without a shadow of a doubt, the continued and unwavering support that I've received from Columbus City Council. None of these initiatives, none of the things that we've been able to put in place would have been possible but for the financial support, the trust, and everything else that I've come to appreciate and that we've grown from and truly been able to utilize in order to advance those initiatives and address many of the mayor's strategic priorities. Working with council has been phenomenal. I think I've had the opportunity to work with just about every council member, many of you that are here tonight as my committee chair, and many that have preceded you, and it truly has been a privilege. We have without a shadow of a doubt the best public employees anywhere in the nation. And we're also very fortunate to have some of the best employee organization or union leadership anywhere. And when you combine the two, and the dedicated efforts of those who are in human resources and other payroll, personnel processing, occupational safety, when you put all that together, you're bound to come up with, you know, the kind of programming and positive things that have assisted us in being the best city anywhere in the nation to live, work, and raise a family. But it's all because of that spirit of cooperation. I'm very blessed to have had a phenomenal deputy director, some tremendous program managers in each of our areas, and as I said before, a fantastic group of human resources professionals that have been able to assist us in accomplishing all of this. Having said all of that, none of it would be possible without the backbone and the support that's been there for me for all these 15 years and prior to that with both my wife, Cheryl on my left, and my daughters, Angela who's here with us tonight, and my older daughter Victoria. They've been my rock, my source of stability throughout, and it truly has been a phenomenal opportunity. I thank you all for that and wish you nothing but Godspeed, and the city's going to continue to grow and to do some tremendous things over the next several years, under your leadership and that of the mayor and all the competent directors that are directly behind me. I'm very happy to know that we've laid a very solid foundation for things that are yet to come, and under the leadership of Director Brandon, we're going to take things to new heights. So again, thank you for your recognition and your support. God bless each and every one of you.
Director Christie, it's been an absolute privilege to work with you. I know there are a couple other council members that would like to make comments. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you, Councilwoman Paley. And first of all, Chet, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for your service to this city. And like I said, you've been in the last 15 years, and during that time, we've been through some tough times at this city, and you've had to negotiate, work with negotiating contracts when we didn't have, when we didn't have a lot of money here, and that can be difficult to do, but you certainly did that with this, the grace and the dignity and the professionalism that you always show. You are a consummate professional.
Thank you.
You absolutely are. You, um, you have high integrity. You just, you know, it's just about doing your assignment, and you have done it in such an amazing way. I had the opportunity, I know, to work to be your chair for a period of time and certainly thoroughly enjoyed that opportunity, learned a lot from you regarding the work that you do for our employees and for the city each and every day. I want to say thank you to your wife and your daughters for allowing you to be at this city for 15 years, for 30 years as a public servant. We know what that requires, and people don't know if they've not been here, but for those who are in the club, we know what that's about. So I want to say thank you to your family. And just to say that our employees are in such a better place, you know, I can just think about all the different programs, especially the wellness programs, but also, and because of that, how much money you have saved the citizens of our community by every time you come in and present the, our new contracts for the net year. We're always, we're always, you know, we're either below what everyone else is, you know, paying, you're saving us so much money, and I really do thank you for that. I know you do have a credible team here. I see a number of your team members are in this room, and it's always been a pleasure to work with them because they give the highest level of service, and we know that can only happen when the director, people follow their leader, and when their leader's great, the department's great. So I just want to say thank you, and I just, you're going to be missed. This is a great day for you. It's somewhat of a sad day for me personally that you're leaving, but I look forward to working with Director Brandon. I'm sure she'll do a fine job, but again, I wish you the very best as you continue to move forward in your life. Wish you just a happy retirement. And my best to you. God bless you.
Thank you. God bless you as well.
Councilmember Harden, I think you're giving me the look.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Paley, and just want to echo some of what Councilmember Tyson said. Public service is definitely a calling, and you answered that call, and you've done it for years and years with the utmost leadership and integrity. And as someone who is a different vantage point in my career to know that and to work with someone with, of such integrity, something that I can only hope to model myself after. So I have, and we certainly appreciate the sacrifices that your family and friends have given to allow you to be that servant. So thank you so much. We are a better city because of your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harden. But just before taking my seat, I do want to acknowledge two of my brothers here that are pretty much like family, Derek and Daryl Cobb, that have been, we've known one another going on 30 years now. They are very much like family, and I just very much appreciate them both being present. They are my Masonic brothers. Thank you both.
Wait a minute, Director Christie, I think Council President Ginther would like to say something.
I'm sorry, sir.
Oh, not at all. Thank you. Thank you for setting the standard for human resource professionals in this community around the state and around the country. We have the best employees, public employees of any city in the country because we have one of the finest human resource directors in all of the country. You've set a high standard, and we have never had to act on any recommendation from your department that we didn't have complete and total confidence in. Thank you, on behalf of a grateful city, to you and to your family for sharing you with us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. Councilmember Tyson?
Thank you. I just have an announcement. On December 2nd, we will have our third quarter, the Finance Committee will have its third quarter hearing at 5 o'clock, and then at 5:30, we will have our budget briefing for the 2015 operating budget, and will begin at 5:30. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Any comments from our elected officials? City auditor? City attorney? This time, I request that the following ordinances be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda in the Finance Committee, 2467-2014, and in Health and Human Services, Are there any other requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or resolution from the consent action portion of the agenda? Seeing none, may we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda for first reading?
Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2388, 2444, 2448, and 2521-2014. Technology Committee ordinance is 2483 and 2548-2014. Zoning Committee ordinance is 2593, 2596, 2609, and 2625-2014.
The following ordinances appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read the ordinance numbers of each into the record?
Finance Committee ordinance is 2512, 2557, 2568, 2573, 2585, 2603, and 2660-2014. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 2513 and 2554-2014. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 2558-2014. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 2511, 2526, and 2564-2014. Public Safety and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 2465, 2474, 2489-2014. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 2285, 2290, 2316, 2376, 2413, 2530, and 2543-2014. Technology Committee ordinance is 2325 and 2332-2014. Development Committee ordinance is 2582, 2583, 2584-2014. Administration Committee ordinance 2569-2014.
May I have approval of these items designated as consent actions? Is there a second? Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginther.
Thank you, consent agenda carries. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee is the Finance Committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. Madam Chair, floor is yours.
Thank you, President Ginter. I have ordinance 2545-2014 to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase winter wear and rain gear for city agencies with Safety Solutions, Inc., to authorize expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the general fund, and to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Chapter 329 of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. This rain wear and winter gear are for our city employees. And Safety Solutions was the only bidder who responded and they submitted additional terms and conditions. In the best interest of the city, the purchasing office negotiated with the company and accepted the revised terms and conditions. And that's why we are waiving competitive bidding, but this was competitively bid. And so with that, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2591-2014 and is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a lease agreement with the Reed Avenue, Avenue Center as a master tenant and to allow for the rental of office and additional, and educational space to a nonprofit 501(c)(3) entities and to manage the day-to-day operations of the building and that city-owned real property identified as 280 Reed Avenue and to declare an emergency. I move to table this for one week.
Harden, Klein, Mills.
Upstate.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Yes.
President Ginter.
Yes.
Thank you. The next ordinance, 2614-2014, is to authorize and direct the city auditor to provide for the transfer of $1,146,242 within the general fund and to transfer appropriations between objects and, and to appropriate additional funds for, for certain non-general fund departments and divisions and to declare an emergency. So as part of the 2014 Third Quarter Financial Review, the Department of Finance and Management identified surpluses and deficits in various objects and several divisions. In order to properly align appropriations with projected expenditures and to allow divisions to operate without interruption through the end of 2014, it is necessary, necessary to transfer the $1,146,242 among divisions within the general fund. This ordinance also authorizes appropriation, transfers for certain non-general fund departments and divisions in order to provide appropriations for the remainder of the year. And lastly, this ordinance also authorizes appropriation in the Municipal Court Computer Fund. And I move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2620-2014, is to make appropriations for 12 months ending December 31 of 2015 for each of the several object Level Ones for which the city of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be the treasury of said city of Columbus and the fund known as the general fund during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes and from other sources of income, the amount of $813,100 and to declare an emergency. I move to table this indefinitely pending public hearings.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2621-2014 and is to make the appropriations and transfers for 12 months ending December 31, 2015 for other funds for, for various divisions and to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. And again, I move to table this indefinitely pending public hearing.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 2622-2014, to make the appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31 of 2015 for selected other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary to declare an emergency. And again, I will move to table this indefinitely pending our public hearings.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. I'm, now move to ordinance 2623-2014, to make the appropriations for 12 months ending December 31, 2015 for general obligation debt service payments related to the city bonds and note retirement funds and to declare an emergency. And again, I move to table this indefinitely pending public hearing.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. If you would now move to, turn back to page 5 on consent and its ordinance number 2467-2014. And this is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a universal term contract for the option to purchase remanufactured toner cartridges and maintenance, that's the change, with RISEX Computer System Center, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $1 to establish a contract from the general fund and to declare an emergency. And I move for passage.
Is there a second?
I'll move to amend.
Is there a second?
I move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. And now I'm going to move to page 6.
I can move to page 6.
I'll move, I'll move for passage, I'm sorry.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. All right. And now I want to, if you'll turn to page 6, ordinance 2581-2014, which is in Health and Human Services. And I would like to turn this ordinance over to Councilor Mills to address this ordinance.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I have ordinance 2581 to amend ordinance 1320-2014 to include Alva's House to act as the fiscal agent of the Human Service Chamber of Franklin County and to declare an emergency. I'd like to request to table this ordinance for one week.
Harden, Klein, Mills.
Yes.
Paley.
Yes.
Tyson.
Upstate.
President Ginter.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. And that's all I have in my committees this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Our next committee is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. Councilmember Harden chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance 2547 to waive competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, and to authorize the Director of the Public Service to enter into a contract with Key Blue Prints, Inc. for preventative maintenance and repair services and to authorize the exchange of an OCETCS 500 system for 24 months of maintenance and repair services and to declare an emergency. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Thank you. Second, we have ordinance 2450 and to amend, to amend the 2014 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to reimburse the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund for labor, equipment, and material costs associated with the alary servicing, to authorize the expenditure of $85,726.92 from the Streets and Highways Bonds Fund for reimbursement to the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund. If there are no questions, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
That's all we have in Public Service tonight. Thank you, President Ginter.
Thank you, Councilmember Harden. Our next committee is the Public Safety and Judiciary Committee. Councilmember Klein chairs that committee. Mr. Chairman, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. A couple pieces in Public Safety and Judiciary, but two pieces involve DNA. And I'd like to turn it over to Director Speaks to maybe knock both of them out and talk about it's 2294 and 2507.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein, President Ginter, member of council. The first ordinance is a federal grant. The purpose of this grant is twofold. It is to assist state and local DNA labs in both increasing capacity and toward increasing the capacity of personnel. With these federal grant monies, which we are privileged once again to obtain, we plan to invest in a robotic workstation and some software in terms of the capacity. In terms of personnel, this will allow us some additional overtime monies to focus on those misdemeanor-type DNA work that's needed. Councilman Ginter, you ask every year, so I checked first thing this morning. We do not have a backlog in the DNA rape kits. I know you were always very concerned over that. So I'm pleased to report to you, sir, that is not the case. But with respect to property-type crimes, this DNA money will assist in decreasing those caseloads. The second ordinance before you is a good example of increasing our capacity, working smarter with technology. It's DNA software that deals with mixed DNA. If you recall, we are presently undergoing an evaluation and retesting and our expert, Dr. Laura Gann, has recommended this software. It is state-of-the-art. It is just out. This will greatly increase our efficiency in mixed DNA cases. So we appreciate your consideration of both ordinances.
Thank you, Director Speaks. I am hopeful that this will expedite the time that it takes to analyze DNA so that the police can identify suspects and hold those people accountable for the actions that they've committed. So the first is 2294, 2014, to authorize and direct the mayor of the city of Columbus to accept a fiscal year 2014 forensic DNA backlog reduction program award from the National Institute of Justice, to authorize the crime lab manager as the city representative to acting conjunction with this grant, and to authorize an appropriation of $282,452 from the unappropriated balance of the general government grant fund to the Division of Police to cover the cost of fiscal year 2014 forensic DNA backlog reduction grant program activities and expenditures. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
2486, 2014, to authorize and direct the administrative and presiding judge of the Franklin County Municipal Court to enter into a contract with Richland County Community Alternative Center to authorize the expenditure of $200,000 with RCCAC for inpatient chemical dependency treatment for indigent OVI and non-OVI offenders, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Codes, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
2507, 2014, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to enter into a contract with Niche Vision Forensics, LLC, for DNA interpretation software for the Division of Police Crime Lab to waive competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of $61,300 from the grant fund, grant number 331405, and to declare an emergency. Any questions or comments for this other piece of DNA legislation? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Moving to Public Utilities. 2334, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with the Shelley Company for the watershed roadway improvements Grig Reservoir Project in an amount up to $1,434,945.97 for the Division of Water to authorize the transfer in expenditure of up to $1,434,945.97 within the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund to amend the 2014 capital improvements budget. Director Davies.
Chairman Klein, President Ginter, members of council, this is the roadway, if you're familiar with Grigs Reservoir, Route 33, Fishinger, just north of Fishinger Road. There's a very heavily used road for the park. Lots of residents go there, as well as our staff that goes to monitor the watershed. So this is to upgrade it. It's become in pretty bad shape.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
2353, 2014, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with the Ryder Company for the Hapcomean Water Plant miscellaneous improvements, alum feed system upgrade project in an amount up to $2,54360 for the Division of Water, to authorize a transfer in expenditure of up to $2,54360 within the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund and to amend the 2014 capital improvements budget. Director.
Chairman Klein, President Ginter, members of council, Hapcomean is our largest water plant, serves over 60%. And this is to improve our alum feed, which is one of the chemicals that we use to, to treat water. And due to new EPA requirements, we need to remove the alum feed location to its own location within the plant still, but to separate it from the, its current location.
Any questions or comments? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
And finally, it's 2461, 2014, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute a construction contract with Elite Excavating Company of Ohio for the Florence Avenue Area Waterline Improvements Project for the Division of Water to provide for payment of inspection, material testing, and related services to the Design and Construction Division, and to authorize an expenditure of up to $2,679,828.2 within the Water Works Enlargement Voted Bonds Fund. Any questions or comments for this water line improvement? I move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Ginter.
Now, Council President, I do have four pieces in Rules and Reference that relate to utilities. I'm more than happy to wait for development, or do you want me to go directly to Rules and Reference? Moving to Rules and Reference, I'm, three pieces, I'm sorry, four pieces total, is a series of pieces of legislation that involve stormwater fees, water rates, and sanitary sewer rates. I'd like to turn it over to Director Davies for presentation.
Chairman Klein, President Ginter, members of council, thank you. This is an annual request that we have with city council for our water, stormwater and sanitary sewer rates. This year, we're requesting a total overall increase of 2.9% on the water bill, which includes those three services that I mentioned. The rates were approved and forwarded to city council by the Sewer and Water Advisory Board, which includes Auditor Dorian, Director Akoski, and members of the community. In addition, we held a public meeting last weekend that you chaired, sir, and invited the public in to learn more about what we were doing and to get their input. As always, we have a low income and senior citizen discount. Even though we have had much higher rates in the past, we are very cognizant of the fact that 2.9% is still 2.9% as an increase, and we're very concerned about that. Residents can call 645-8276 to inquire about the discount. We typically use federal and state programs that currently exist to determine eligibility, such as heap and food stamps. You can also go to our website to learn more about it. We also have it inserted in our bills at rec centers and whenever we have a community event, we pass out pamphlets as well. The majority of this increase is driven by our capital program, which we've talked about quite a bit in my three years as director. Most of that on the sewer side is a result of the two consent decrees we have and the upgrades to our plants and our distribution system. Additionally, we have increased the size of all three of our water plants and constructed a new upground reservoir. Excuse me. One of the things that we're, we're really proud of, and I'm very glad I wasn't director at the time, but five to 10 years ago, we had double-digit increases as we got into our consent decrees with the state EPA. I'm sure President Ginter remembers 15 to 18% increases. And we did that in anticipation of knowing that we had to legally meet these mandates, and we did. And we are on target. And I think you will see in the next few years, we are very competitive. Right now, we will come even more so as time moves on because other cities are beginning to embark on that. So the average bill is based on a family of four, and this family in Columbus will see an increase of roughly $7 a quarter or $2.33 a month. I'm happy, happy to answer any additional questions you may have about the process.
Thank you, Director Davies, for the explanation. I just remain concerned about folks on fixed incomes in particular, that any percent increase is going to hit their bottom line and affect them in a, in a tremendous way. I, I appreciate you identifying those programs that are available for those, those folks who are, that may qualify based on their income and just would encourage you and your staff to continue to get that word out. I believe that there's, there's information sent in every bill.
Correct.
About, about those programs. Because while the state consent decree in a lot of ways ties our hands, it requires us to raise rates in order to pay for the billions of dollars of upgrades to maintain water and sewer infrastructure, to keep our environment clean. And, you know, we're, and a lot of, you know, required to do that by the state and, and as a result, have to pay for those infrastructures improvements. I think we always have to keep in mind that these, you know, these rates directly affect folks in the city of Columbus and our service area who are just trying to make ends meet. So I appreciate your diligence in keeping in mind that fact and promoting the programs that are available. And I think- And I think just as a city, we have to do a better job of making sure that every resident that is eligible does take advantage of those programs.
Thank you. And you remind me, and I apologize, I didn't mention, we are also currently undertaking an affordability analysis, which is our way of looking at the overall needs of the system. And we use that data to go to the EPA to ask for, in most cases, an extension of time to spread the costs out, to keep prices lower. And that has been a driving force of ours since 2004 when we embarked on this.
Thank you, Director Davies. Any questions or comments? Councilwoman Mills, President Protem Mills.
Thank you, Chair Klein. I did have a question in terms of our compliance as a city. It relates to this. If you could share a little bit about that, and then, as you mentioned before, our affordability and forecasting ahead and trying to figure that out and plan for financially, not considering the increases being part of that.
Sure. In terms of compliance, when we entered two consent decrees and we created a wet weather management plan in 2005, we had different milestones that we had to hit. We've already done all the work at our two wastewater treatment plants, so that work has already been completed. We obviously haven't paid for it all, as we're paying it over time, but that work is done. As we've talked about many times at this forum, Blueprint Columbus is underway that we're investigating to see if we can find a better way to deliver a green solution to our current plan. And we will find out next September whether or not that will be accepted by the EPA. And either way, we are prepared to keep moving forward and meet all our requirements. The affordability analysis, we've hired a firm that is helping us look at all the projected projects, all of the projected costs over the next 40 years, 30, 40 years. And we use that to determine the average person, how much a person of certain income could afford that portion of the bill. And there's a breaking point where we feel it's an unfair burden to our citizens, and we argued that the first time around, and that's how we got 40 years, which is unique as well. And we're hopeful that, given our track record and our ongoing concern, that we'll be successful in doing whatever we need to do to make sure people treat it fairly.
Any other questions or comments? I recommend that we move forward for passage, but I also recommend that we keep in mind just exactly what we're doing and how this affects folks across the city of Columbus, and we're cognizant about that moving forward. I move for passage on 2475, 2014, to amend Chapter 1147 of the Columbus City Codes to enact new sanitary sewer service rates for the year beginning January 1, 2015, and repeal the existing sections being amended.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
2476, 2014, to amend Chapter 1105 of the Columbus City Codes to enact new water rates for the year beginning January 1, 2015, and to repeal the existing sections being amended.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Finally, 2477, 2014, to amend Section 1144.08 of the Columbus City Codes to enact new stormwater fees for the year beginning January 1, 2015, and to repeal the existing section being amended.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember Klein. Our next committee is the Development Committee. President Protem Mills chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Gunther. Tonight in development have the following ordinance, beginning with ordinance 2382, to adopt the consolidated submission for community planning and development programs, including the Consolidated Plan, the Related Citizen Participation Plan, and the Action Plan, to authorize the filing of the consolidated submission with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and to declare an emergency. This is a very big deal. This ordinance represents a five-year consolidated submission. And the Consolidated Plan and its related components include a single submission of the planning and application aspects of the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Programs. The plan represents a continued commitment to providing decent housing and suitable living environments and expanding economic opportunities. And I first want to take this time to thank Director Rakowski, Director Shoney, and their team for working on the plan, and certainly for the outreach on the plan, the preparation for the hearing to educate the community, the time to allow the community an opportunity to review the plan, and the comments that we did receive in return. But more importantly, I want to thank them and their team for the work behind the plan and what the plan provides on behalf of the city of Columbus. And I'm just going to highlight a few. It may seem like more than a few when I get started, but it's a pretty big deal, and I want to make sure that we understand the impact of this funding and what it provides and allows us to do. The housing department served 35 first-time homebuyers with downpaying assistance, saw the completion of 110 affordable rental units, monitored 48 rental projects, and provided $171,327 in operating support for the community chodos. In addition to that, completed 218 projects for the elderly and disabled, provided equipment to assist 22 households with a hearing impaired member, made 22 homes handicap accessible, served 355 homeowners with emergency repairs, served 647 persons in the rebuilding lives program, and provided shelter to 5,851 individuals. We additionally served 800 households with emergency vacay orders. In addition to that, on the side of economic development, assisted 22 businesses with the creation and retention of 1,840 jobs, conducted neighborhood safety academies with 200 graduates, provided 160 bicycle helmets, maintained 120 city-owned properties, molded and maintained 443 properties, and over 20,000 requests for services or information handled by the neighborhood liaisons. And certainly, finally, but not least, are the children in our community, serving approximately 300 children aged 6 to 14 in a variety of sites throughout the city of Columbus, in addition to the Capital Kids Program, serving several children through K through 5 per day in an eight-week program. Those are just the highlights in regards to the importance of this plan and the funds that allow the city to continue our commitment. So first, I'd like to ask for our speaker on this particular ordinance, Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, if you will please approach the podium. Oh, that's what I thought. Mr. Wilkins, if you'll give me just one moment to remove this ordinance from the table. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkins, if you please will share your first and last name and your address, and I believe you signed up to speak for ordinance 2382. Mr. Wilkins?
Nathaniel George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue, vacant in development, property of the chairman solely for North Linden area. Again, you said a whole lot, I'm all for it, but I just want to ask a question. Why five years? Why this cannot be extended for 10 to 20 years due to the city of Ohio area? So again, I just want to thank you for this ordinance once again.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. And I wish we could have that kind of comfort as well, that 10-year to 20-year. I will allow Director Rakowski or Director Shoney to add any comments related to Mr. Wilkins' question, if you have any.
I would just make a general comment. Chair Mills, President Gunther, other members of council, and the fact that I know there was a lot of discussion that we had at the public hearing about all of the various needs that were identified through this planning process and the limitations that we have in regard to these grants and the things that we can fund, and the fact that those dollars are limited, but that we also, this is one piece of what we do here at the city, and council's currently begun deliberations on the operating budget. There are many programs within the operating budget across various departments that address these same needs that have been identified and try to help the most vulnerable citizens that we have here in the city of Columbus. And we also will begin shortly after the first of the year to begin dealing and constructing our capital improvements budget. And again, I would point out that there are many programs and many projects within that capital improvements budget that also address the needs that were brought up in the planning process. So we try to use all the resources that we have and all the different programs that we have through all of those budgets to try and address the needs of our most vulnerable citizens.
Thank you, Director Rakowski. Director Shoney, no comments. Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Mills. I just want to say also thank you to the community research partners for really reaching out to so many neighborhoods and to gather this information, to be able to show this council and the city what the needs are of our city, for putting these documents together they presented at the hearing. Secondly, I just want to comment on certainly the importance of the CDBG dollars in terms of our sexual awareness programs that we have here in the city. So appreciate the work that these dollars go to support. And lastly, as you mentioned, we're going to hopefully passing the Action Plan and the Consolidated Plan. And it's important to do these action plans every year, I think, too, because we have the opportunity to look at what the strategic goals are. And as the community changes, we certainly have an opportunity to add new goals and so forth. If we would have looked at this last year, it probably wouldn't have said to reduce the infant mortality rate. It probably would not have said to improve access to healthy food. Of the top 20 strategic plan goals, that information comes because of having all that great outreach in our community, touching all those different neighborhood organizations, touching individuals to find out where we need to move our community in terms of around health and human services. So I do appreciate the work, again, of community research partners, as well as the departments working together and being able to have a working document to continue to move our community forward for many of our most vulnerable people that live in this community. So thank you, Chairwoman Mills.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. I wanted to also add some of the important work on the health side that you mentioned in terms of the leveraging of support. 100 households were supported for longer-term housing between the Hopewell and Ryan White NCD BG funding, and 47 households are supported for short-term rent or utility assistance. In addition to the 1,350 people that were screened for STIs, and as Director Rakowski talked about, this is just one effort, but it certainly is a companion piece to many of the other efforts that we are working towards, including the high infant mortality rate. The screening for pregnancy that we've done with the 52 women is key because that's the first gateway into getting prenatal care, and we know the importance of that in terms of healthy birth outcomes. If there are no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Next, I have ordinance 2464-2014, to authorize the director of the Department of Development to enter into contract with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission for the implementation of eligible activities for the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $314,029.77 from the government general grant fund, and to declare an emergency. First, I'd like to request to move this ordinance from the table.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Hearing no other comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Next, I have ordinance 2592-2014, to amend ordinance 0349-2005 by adjusting the boundaries of the Hayton Run North and the Hayton Run South Tiff Incentive District to reestablish the Tiff exemption status for combined parcel and to declare an emergency. Hearing no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
And next, President Gunther, I have one other piece of legislation and rules and reference, if you allow me to move forward. Ordinance 2479-2014, to adopt a urban commercial overlay as provided for in Chapter 3372 of the Columbus City Code for portions of the fifth-by-northwest planning area, and to amend the Columbus City Code by enactment of Section 3372.698. Hearing no comments or questions, I'd like to move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
Thank you. That's all I have by way of legislation. I have one announcement. I wanted to share with the community that the U.S. Green Building Council, Central Ohio Chapter, organized activities at five area schools for the Third International Green Apple Day of Service. More than 85 teachers, parents, students, organizations, and businesses came together to complete service projects that helped improve the learning environment at five local schools, Columbus Sciota, Indian Springs, May's Elementary, West High School, and Evening Street Elementary School. The volunteers created edible gardens and constructed compost bins and rain gardens, and made general site improvements. And I just want to thank them for all the work that will have such a ripple effect. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, President Protem Mills. Our final committee this evening is the Administration Committee. Councilmember Paley chairs that committee. Madam Chair, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Gunther. Tonight in the Administration Committee, we have ordinance 2590-2014, to accept a proposed collective bargaining agreement between the city of Columbus and Communication Workers of America Local 4502, April 24, 2014, through April 23, 2017, to provide for wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment for employees in the bargaining unit as provided in the attachment heretofore, and to declare an emergency. The highlights of this contract include reduction in the PERS pickup, increase in insurance premium contributions, and modest across-the-board wage increases. Director Christie, do you have any additional comments?
Chair Paley, President Gunther, members of council. Just very briefly, I think you've captured the essence of the agreement that's been reached by the parties. I would like to say that this was a very fair and responsible agreement that addressed many of the needs and the interests of each of the parties involved. I do want to acknowledge the work of our bargaining team members, particularly our bargaining team chair spokesperson, Tom Worley, our labor relations manager, Jan Lonza, and our deputy director, Jacula Bass. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the leadership and professionalism of the CWA team led by President Dave McKeon and the members of his bargaining team. They did an absolutely phenomenal job, worked very, very hard to reach this agreement. And I think we've all come out better for it. And I would urge council's passage of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Yes, Director Christie, I would also like to recognize the CWA President Dave McKeon and some of the CWA members who are here tonight in council chambers. Could you please stand, David, and be in your team and be recognized? I know that they have worked really hard to get this contract and to be fair with the city, and they have great employees to make this city, as we spoke earlier, to have the great employees that we have. So thank you, Dave McKeon and your team, for that contract. If there are no other, Councilmember Klein?
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, again, to recognize the individuals in the back, Mr. McKeon, President McKeon and his bargaining team, just great individuals who I know obviously bargained in tremendously good faith in representing their employees, and certainly Director Christie on his, probably one of his final contracts that he negotiated. Godspeed. Thank you.
If there are no other questions or comments, I move for passage.
Second.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
I have no other legislation this evening, Council President Gunther.
Thank you, Councilmember Paley. If there's nothing else to come before council this evening, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Clerk call the roll.
Harden, Klein, Mills, Paley, Tyson, President Gunther.
We stand adjourned. We have four non-agenda speakers that will take momentarily.